It is, if everyone could please be seated. Okay. I would like to call this meeting to order September 19th, 2023. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley. Count. Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Thank you so much. Do we have any additions, modifications, or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
All right. So we're going to start off with a couple of presentations. First, we're going to start with the recognition of Officer Andrew Flink, who's been awarded the Outstanding Dedication to DUI Enforcement Award. If we could have Chief Shannon, please come. Thank you so much, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, I'm Clint Shannon, your Chief of Police. Wanted to bring to your attention tonight a very prestigious award that one of our officers recently received at the State Chapter for Mothers Against Drunk Drivers in Fort Myers, Florida. And it's Officer Andrew Flink who's joining me up here tonight. Officer Andrew Flink's been a member of the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department since 2019, and he has committed to DUI enforcement. His commitment begins through his proactive enforcement efforts as a member of the traffic unit. Along with his primary duties of DUI enforcement, he also concentrates on speed enforcement, careless and aggressive driving enforcement, and he serves as a traffic homicide investigator as well. His goals through his enforcement efforts are to keep the motoring public safe as they travel throughout our city and prevent them from becoming the victim of an impaired driver. During 2022, Officer Flink made a total of 170 DUI arrests. It's one of the leaders in the state of Florida. He also made 23 felony drug arrests and regularly volunteered to participate in county-wide DUI enforcement initiatives with other agencies. Officer Flink, with his passion for serving his community and removing impaired drivers from the roadways, dedicates his time to teach and mentor his fellow officers in the skills needed for DUI detection, arrests, and court preparation. He allows them to shadow him through the investigative process and arrest procedures, and then guides them through their own DUI investigations and arrests. He is sought out by his peers for guidance and support on cases involving impaired drivers. He regularly reviews case law, evidence gathering, report writing, and the proper techniques for conducting standardized field sobriety tasks along with his fellow officers. Officer Flink regularly accepts calls while off-duty regarding traffic and impaired driving-related questions. He also volunteers to speak with students in the community about the dangers of underage drinking and driving. It is through the above efforts that Officer Flink has earned this recognition. He was selected out of 115 nominees statewide to receive this award for his outstanding dedication to DUI enforcement. This is probably the most prestigious award they give throughout the state each year. And I know he's been awarded different awards for the last four years in a row. He also was our 2020 Officer of the Year. Needless to say, we are extremely proud of Officer Flink's accomplishment and the manner in which he represents the Palm Beach Gardens Police Department. So with that being said, congratulations, Officer Flink.
All right. Thank you so much, Officer Flink. We're so lucky that we have someone out there protecting us and making sure our roads are safe with such a big heart. Next, we have the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Award. So we're going to have our Fire Assistant Chief Cory Bissett, please come up to the podium for this presentation. Thank you.
Don't get too comfortable because you'll be coming down and take some more pictures here. Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Ferris, City Attorney Lohman, thank you for having us here tonight. And for the record, Assistant Chief of Operations Cory Bissett for your fire rescue department. You know, this has been eighth, the eighth consecutive year that we've won this prestigious award. And it's not only from our people in the streets, but it's a collaboration with the hospitals that we work with day in, day out. And it's also from the support of all of you up there and throughout the city in general. So I'm very proud of this, but I don't want to steal too much thunder from Kayla Fox, who I'm going to have come up. She is the Executive Director for our local American Heart Association to do the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Kayla Fox, Executive Director of the American Heart Association. Our mission is to be a relentless force for a world of longer, healthier lives. And we're constantly researching new ways on how we can impact heart disease and stroke, our number one and number five killers. Based on science and research, we regularly release new best practices to our healthcare community so we can all lead longer, healthier lives. With all of our work in preventive care, unfortunately, heart disease still remains the number one killer in the U.S. And people, and the people combating that on the ground, like our fire rescue teams, are responding to emergency calls and saving lives every day. This evening, I'd like to present a very special award to your Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue. For the eighth year in a row, they have achieved Gold Plus for our 2023 Mission Lifeline EMS Award. This award is presented to EMS teams that meet the highest standard of responsive care for people experiencing a heart attack and follow the latest American Heart Association guidelines to make sure patients are receiving the best standard of care. It's an honor to have a Mission Lifeline recipient in our community, and I'd like to present this certificate to Cory Bissett, the Assistant Chief of Operations of Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue.
And lastly, we have our collective bargaining agreement with the Service Employees International Union, or SEIU, or Florida Public Services Union, FPSU. And we have Cheryl Stewart, our HR Administrator, ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Ferris, thank you very much. It is with great pleasure that I'm here to present to you that is under consent for your consideration resolution to approve and ratify a new collective bargaining agreement with the SEIU Public, Florida Public Services Union, which would be effective October 1st of 2023. The union and city teams began negotiations April 18th for a new contract, and by the end of the third session, reached a tentative agreement. And the members of the SEIU voted in favor on August 18th for the contract that is under consideration, under consent. To hit some of the main, well, first to share with you a snapshot of who is in the collective bargaining unit. It covers 72 employees who work throughout our Public Services Department in all of the divisions that you can see here. And to hit some of the main highlights, first and foremost is updating our salaries, our positions, as well as individual employee salaries, using the same methodology that we do for all bargaining and non-bargaining employees throughout the city, which is to align all of our pay positions to the external market based on economic factors such as the CPI and the Employment Cost Index in order to maintain city council's policy to be within the top 70 to 75th percentile, which in this particular case is within the top three to five comparable organizations for similar services and structures that we have throughout the county, which ends up being about 10 other organizations with whom we compare. We base this on salary data as of the latest contract information we have, which is actually we, city staff was able to get data as of July of 2023. And accordingly, we make the adjustments in order to maintain external competitiveness, to keep us in line with our policy and to maintain competitiveness for recruitment and retention purposes. So as a result, this chart here shows where incremental, incrementally changing, increasing the ranges will result in the positions, minimums and maximums over the three years. And by the third year, over the collective three years, it amounts to a 19% increase for a total projected cost of $1,8,494. To touch on some of the operational employment policies that as a result of the work that we did at the bargaining table was to update the overtime policy to actually reflect how overtime is assigned according to the position and qualifications that be needed for the assignment rather than actual seniority. And this has been long time accepted by the employees as a way to assign overtime. In addition, regarding emergencies, in the Management Rights article, a new provision would provide the city manager the discretion to provide on an as-needed basis special compensation to employees who may be required to work during declared emergencies such as a hurricane, while other employees may be required to stay home until their assignments post, post-event. And the special kind of compensation could be either additional pay or additional paid time off. Another update is on the policy side is regarding our acute illness leave policy. This is a major medical illness provision that actually was frozen during the downturn in 2010. So it would be a change that would allow, in the past, it never has been paid out when someone would leave, like personal leave is paid out on a fiscal year basis. This would be for those that may still have an acute leave balance, those who are separating from employment that are in good standing, meaning without any discipline or pending actions against the city, would be able to be paid out for whatever time is in their acute illness leave bank. And then in addition to that regarding uniforms, there's an increase in $50 per year for employees on an as-needed basis for safety boots and shoe replacements. So the results of the work that was done by both bargaining teams would be to have a new three-year contract, again, to keep all of the great employees that we have, as well as help us with our recruitment. And we would be recommending approval under consent.
Thank you so much. Moving along, we have comments from the public. I do have one comment card for Mr. Jay Goldwasser. If you would come up to the podium, sir, and, oh, sorry. My fault. I completely skipped over, it's my mistake. Sorry. Ron, I am, I know I did it before. Keep doing it to you. Next is our City Manager Report. Oh, I'm sorry. Goodness, okay. My mistake entirely. Do we have any questions?
Not now.
No, no. So much for being organized. All right. I'm sure our council does have some things they want to speak about.
No, the only comment I has is it's always the history with the city of tender with our employees. And it's no different between the various departments that we have, whether it's City Hall, Public Safety, SEIU. I think longevity is really the key to our success in the way that we operate and respond to our residents. So to me, this is just another way to, to keep those folks within the top three, as we like to do within, within the county, upgrade the people we need to upgrade, and then obviously incentivize to keep employees here with these particular raises for the next three years. So I'm happy we can do this. And obviously, we want to keep as many good people as we can here with little turnover, because turnover is never fun to deal with when you have to train new people and acclimate them to the way we do business, which is superior here in the city. So congratulations to staff and also to our employees on the three-year deal.
Well said. Marcy?
No, very well said. I agree 100%.
Anyone else? All right. Now that I got that right, apologize. Again, echoing Bert's sentiments, very well said. And I know that this is something that's so important to our staff and especially to the union, as things are changing statewide as well. So congratulations, staff, for getting this done. We look forward to seeing it go through. Now, I do have comments from the public. I do have one comment card. My apologies, sir. Mr. Jay Goldwasser, if you would be so kind as to come to the podium, you'll have about three minutes to speak. If you could state your name and your address, please.
My name's Jay Goldwasser, 5200 Donald Ross Road. Can I give you guys a picture? Picture's worth a thousand words.
If you could give it to the clerk, please, sir.
My name is Jay Goldwasser. I gave you my address. Hate speaking in public. Good evening, everyone. I'm a local merchant in Palm Beach Gardens. I built and have operated a Shell gas station in Donald Ross Village on Donald Ross Road. When I built the station 17 years ago, it was one of the most hidden gas stations in the country because of one acre preserve hiding it. There's a monument sign. It was 60 feet, 62 feet back from the curb because of the county code, county setback and the right-of-way. So at that time, I asked Planning and Zoning Director Kara Irwin, since she can't see the gas station at all, if I could get an extension on the grand opening sign. She let me keep the permitted sign up for 10 months. So this was really critical for the success of the business, and I really appreciated it. So that was 17 years ago. Over the last 10 years, believe it or not, it's 10 years, I have secured, negotiated, planned, and built the Alton Mobile Gas Station. We finally opened on June 19th, three months ago today. Gas station's doing well. Between the shopping center, ExxonMobil, the city, I was restricted to the monument sign to build it exactly as it was approved. I was not allowed to put car wash on it. As you can see from the photo, I don't know if you got it, that's the front of the gas station. Doesn't look like a gas station. That's actually a car wash. You can't see the car wash. If I put a sign on the front, you wouldn't see it because of all the trees. I did everything I was asked to do by the city, no matter the expense. It's a beautiful facility, adding to the prestige of Palm Beach Gardens. I was asked to build a seven-foot privacy wall. That's on the next page. To add planters on top of the wall with drip irrigation. So when people left the car wash, they could see plants. The whole wall cost me a little over $100,000. My problem is nobody sees the cars entering or exiting the car wash. I put in state-of-the-art equipment, spent a lot of money, but the car wash is really struggling. I have applied for and been issued a grand opening sign permit. I have not placed the sign up yet. So I'm asking for your help and allow the sign to remain for 60 days. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Well, first of all, you did a great job. Second of all, that's actually something that I'll have our city manager get someone from staff to work with you on that.
Okay.
Get with planning and zoning. So we'll, if you just have a seat, yep. We'll have someone reach out to you for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. And yes, public speaking is not always easy, obviously, right? Let's see. So now, we do have the City Manager Report.
Just a couple of things to bring to your attention. At this time, I'd like to bring David Reyes up to the podium to give us an update on our Crystal River City assistance that we gave them after the hurricane to help them recover. David, if you would, please.
Good evening, Council. For the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator and Director of Emergency Management. I'm just going to briefly go to an update on the Crystal River. This is a unique project. And normally, I'll be sitting here talking about Operation Sister City. I do, I will talk to you a little bit about, there's a small portion of that, but this was a different mission that we've done with the Public Works team. So I'm going to update you on that. As you know, August 30th of this year, Florida East Coast was hit by Hurricane Idalia. It's a category three in the east coast and affected a lot of the communities where Sister, Crystal River was one of those communities affected. Most of the damage in this city was flooding, not necessarily wind damages. About a mile and a half inland, there was a lot of flooding, all the way up to three feet of water inside homes. A lot of damage. Crystal River is this very small city. It's only about 50 full-time employees, and it's only about 3,500 people in total. So it's a small city in comparison to what we are used to dealing with. Therefore, they really needed the help and the resources. So a quick timeline. September 1st, Mr. Ferris and myself, we made a phone call to the City Manager over at Crystal River to kind of find out what are the needs, what you guys need, how can we help? And we were starting kind of going to more of the Operation Sister City. They needed a lot more work and a lot more help. And they really were kind of struggling with their stormwater system and some of their parks and cleanup that didn't have the resources. So we, we wanted to put together a team to go out there. Unfortunately, you know, we didn't have enough information to really understand what kind of resources. So this was, as you know, Friday, that was Labor Day weekend. And so that Tuesday, September 5th, a team of us, Todd Engel, our city engineer, Dan Whitick, our operations manager for stormwater, myself, we went out to, to the city. We drove the whole city with our staff. We were able to make a determination exactly what they needed, what kind of resources, what kind of equipment. At the same time that we are there, I'm calling over here and talking to Joe Correa, Deputy Community Services Administrator, saying, Joe, we're going to need X pieces of equipment. We're going to need X amount of guys. Can we get the team together? So all of that happened on that day. September 6th come along, the team is on the road at 7:00 in the morning on the way with all the equipment to provide assistance. That team returned on September 8th. And then back in September 14, we sent another team out there to provide some additional resources, because they lost the entire city hall. It was in three foot of water, so they don't have a city hall right now. They're working in a separate building. So a lot. So this is the first deployment. This is a team that went out on that first deployment on September 6th and all the equipment that was out there. This team went out there and their first task was to try to get their two parks. They only have three parks in the whole city. One was open only because it was inland, so they really get a lot of damage. The other two parks closer to the water were not open to the, to the public. A lot of the residents out there had nothing left. All their stuff was outside in the, in the street. And they were really dying to at least go to the park and just, just get some fresh air, but the park was not available to them. Our team arrived out there and about noon time, the next day before the afternoon, they have completed both parks. They removed all of the debris. They removed all the, the structures that were damaged. They repaired. They went above and beyond. They not only simply picked up the debris, put it aside so the park could be open, they did all the repairs to the park repair, repair, all the split ran, fencing, they graded their parking lots, never been graded before. They regraded everything, put new gravel. I mean, the park looked better than before. Even the city managers, this park never looked this good before. They were so grateful for our team. But it's because that's what they do. They always go on the extra mile, the same way they're doing here. They went out there and they took the same attitude. Immediately after those parks were open, they moved over to the city and then started maintaining their, inspecting their stormwater system, cleaning out all the catch spaces, a lot of the inlets that were completely full of debris and sediments unable to drain. They figured out the entire stormwater system. They cleaned it up. They knew pretty much the whole system by the time they were there. And not only that, they were able to even make determination and provide suggestions to their staff for long-term solutions. So they mapped the whole system and provided long-term solutions for them. Just some quick pictures of what you see. You see park benches that were completely destroyed. You see some of our staff working. To the right, you see some of the sediments that were in the inlets. Again, some of the parks and after pictures. Here, you can see on the top picture right here, some debris still left on the parking lot. And on the bottom, where the grading was completed, this is a catch basin completely full, all the sediment that came into it because of the water, you see how clean it is. So they just went above and beyond. Second deployment comes up. This is the next team that goes back. And this deployment was to deliver some supplies. Since they lost everything and we were ready to have items going into auction, so instead of putting into auction, we decided, maybe they can use this item. So we made a lot of donations. Our engineering police department donated office desk, chairs, tables, filing. Our Burns Road, as you know, going into construction. So we donated all of our tables, chairs, all the event tables. A lot of material was donated. And Fleet Services donated one of our vehicles that was ready to go into auction. They needed an extra vehicle, so that vehicle was donated. And our Fleet Department, again, our employees go in the extra mile. They just, they just don't do things. They just go the extra mile. Before this vehicle goes out there, they do a full service on that car. They check the entire car. Oil changes, change trucks. I mean, the car was basically I mean, the car was basically ready to go. So they really did simply want to send, and they detailed the car before it went out too. So they went all out for this. I saw it, and I said, "I'll take the car myself. This is a nice car." But it's just amazing to see the attitude of those employees and the way they just basically... Some of the pictures are when they went out there for the second deployment to make the delivery. And so just more than what we did for Crystal River, I just also wanted to take the time, and I invited them to come here tonight. So if you allow me, I wanted them to stand up. I'd like to, or the Public Works team, if you guys could come up here. Come on up, guys. Joe, bring them over. This amazing team just...
I'm doing pictures.
Yes, you guys are. So as you all get back to your seats to save time, so this is the same team. This is the quality that you get, you know, right after a storm, and that's why our emergency management here in the city, we are so proud because we know we can respond to our residents. I mean, this was fast. This was from a Friday to the next week. I can tell you that just, I live in the county, and I didn't see, I never seen the county respond as fast as they responded, to go all the way out to the east coast to help another community. So in addition to this, we really wanted to do Operation Sister City. The good thing is that in this city, only one employee was really received damage to his home. I mean, he lost his house completely, but everybody else was okay. So we really didn't have to go through the entire sister city. However, we are helping this employee, and we again partnered with City of Callaway and Christ Fellowship. They already committed to make a financial donation. Today, we posted a namesome list of items that he's in need of, and believe it or not, we posted that this afternoon around 4:00, and six or seven items are already taken. That's how fast our employees react to these things. So our employees are already purchasing items that we are going to be able to send to help this other employee out on Crystal River. And I couldn't be any more proud of our staff and what we do in the city, and thank you for the support of all of you to allow us to be able to help other communities outside of the city of Palm Beach Gardens.
Other than thank you, David, for organizing and bringing this all together, Joe, all the team, we appreciate it so much. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We just, our council is making a lot of noise up here. We would very much like to get the list of items needed by the Sister City employee that is requiring it. So if you could, we haven't seen that yet. We'd love to see that and be of assistance. Anything else, sir? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for everything you do. Operation Sister City is real. I think we have one more thing.
Thank you for giving me my report. I got so excited over there, I forgot about the next thing.
I was riveted by the union earlier, so...
Yes. At this time, I'd like to call Candace Temple to the podium to talk to you about award-winning stroke wars fire rescue video that some of you have seen, but not all.
For a moment there, I thought I was off the hook. Okay. I think I'll show you the video, and then I'll tell you why I'm showing you the video. How about that?
Remember your training. Every 40 seconds, someone in America suffers a stroke. Sometimes, they mistake it for something else.
I remember, master. They often ignore the symptoms or go to sleep.
Correct. And every minute they wait increases the risk of brain damage, disability, or death.
Time equals brain.
Correct again, my apprentice. We must master the skills if we hope to defeat a stroke. Do you remember your training?
I, I think so.
Just remember, balance, eyes, face, arms, speech, time.
Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. What if I forget?
You may be the galaxy's only hope. Just remember, be fast.
Be fast. Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. Be fast.
You don't know the power of a stroke.
Your training is complete. Let's be fast. Balance. You may experience a loss of balance, headache, or dizziness.
Eyes. You may have blurred vision.
Face. Sudden weakness or numbness in the face, especially on one side.
Arm. Sudden weakness or numbness in an arm or leg, especially on one side of the body.
Impressive.
Every minute that a person suffers from a stroke, 2 million brain cells will die. They need immediate medical intervention.
I'm ready. Let's be fast and finish the fight.
You may be the only hope. Master the skills. Learn the warning signs.
Okay, I'm going to end it right there. Thank you for watching that bearing with me. So I showed you that because now I'm happy to say that this is an award-winning, recognized nationally at our annual conference for 3CMA, which is the City-County Communications and Marketing Association. We were up against many other entries, all totaled for the entire competition, not just our category. There were 878 entries. We are, yes, we're competing against a lot of cities and counties. So we received the Savvy Award. It's called the Savvy Award, and quite an accomplishment. I'm just tickled because this was just a crazy idea that a team internally worked together on, and we just weren't sure if anyone else would get it. But I think that we found the right balance of educating and entertaining, and we maybe tricked a lot of people into learning something. So this was in the video category for education and training, and I just want to recognize the other staff members who contributed. Fire Chief Brier, Keith Brier, our fearless leader, Andrew Leza, Corey Bassett, Patricia Merkel, John Reynolds, John Bohm, who was our duke, and myself. Truly a team effort, and we're really, really proud. As you can see from the photo here, I took the lightsabers with me and walked up to the stage and accepted the award in Orlando, and everybody really loved that. Some of the judges' comments were that they loved the way in our application that we showed our local 911 stats and how there was a need for education around stroke. So it's not just making a fun video, it's tying it back to why, you know, what's the purpose of doing it? We were also told that it was such a strong entry and that the entire project was a creative way to deliver content around an important topic, stroke awareness. So thank you again, and who knows what will happen next with our stroke awareness PSAs we try to up the ante each year.
Am I done now? Yes, I'm done now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. What a great team. That still is my favorite video, and John, we still need your autograph. We keep asking for your autograph. But yeah, be fast. Moving along, we are going ahead to go into our consent agenda. I don't believe I've been approached about any of our council team pulling anything from the consent. No? All right. So may I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to move consent.
Second. Bert and Marcy? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving along to our public hearings. September 19th, 2023, going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial statement. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case. Resolution 49, 2023, the site plan for parcel A, Pod 18. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card to my right and give it to our city clerk, Patty Snyder, over here on my left. Our city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right. Thank you so much. If the clerk could please read the title for Carl.
Resolution 40, 2023, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the city of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Palm Beach County property appraiser and tax collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. We do, going to need to open the hearing, and we have a staff presentation from Arianne Pansak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council, for the record, my name is Arianne Pansak, Finance Administrator. Tonight is our second public hearing regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324, and before you tonight, we will have Resolution 40, 2023, setting the millage rate for the next fiscal year at 5.1700 mils, and Ordinance 11, 2023, that will adopt the budget for fiscal year 2324. There have been no changes to the presentation since the last meeting, and would be happy to make that presentation again if council would like, or we can go straight to the required actions tonight that need to be made.
I'm looking around. Go ahead, Bert.
I think since it's the Finance Administrator's first year, we should have her do the presentation all over again, just to break her in, train her a little bit, right?
Everybody would love to hear it, I'm sure.
Go straight to action.
Let's go straight to action. We're good. I'm just...
All right. So we don't have anyone wishing to speak on this item. We have zero comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve and bring it back for discussion?
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 40, 2023.
Thank you, Carl.
We need to...
We have to read the whole thing.
We have to read the whole thing. Oh, sorry. Just make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 40, 2023, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2323, 2024 at 5.1700 mils. Second.
Second. All right. So that's Carl and Dana. Let's bring it back for discussion. Carl, you made the motion. You want to go ahead, and do you have anything to share?
I'm good with what I said last time, so I have nothing further.
All right. We'll move on down.
Nope.
Marcy?
Good.
All good. Thank you.
All right. So we had no further discussion. I guess you got off the hook for the second presentation as well. It was very thorough the first time. Bert, anyway, let's go ahead. For Resolution 40, 2023, adopting our total millage rate at 5.17. If we could get a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to complete the budget hearings, we're going to move on to Ordinance 11, 2023. If the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 11, 2023, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting budget for the city of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed regarding Ordinance 11 since first reading?
Thank you. There's been no changes since the first reading.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and we are not asking for another presentation. We don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, and we'll have to have this read as well. So if I could get a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 11, 2023, on second reading, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2024. 2024.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, you'll have to do that again. Your mic was not on.
Understood. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 11, 2023, on second reading, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Carl.
Second.
Thank you. Second from Dana. Do we have any further discussion? None? All right. Thank you so much. Let's take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The budget has been passed with a decrease in property taxes. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Excellent work.
Good job.
Thank you. Great job.
All right. Moving right along. Does anyone have anything to say before I move along? We're okay? We're going to move on to our non-quasi-judicial public hearing. If the clerk could read the title for Ordinance 16.
Ordinance 16, 2023, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending its comprehensive plan to adopt evaluation and appraisal review, EAR-based amendments pursuant to Section 163.3191 Florida statutes, which provides for a comprehensive update to all elements affecting the pagination in each amended element, providing that the text as amended or revised shall substitute for and replace in full the existing text in all amended elements, providing for an update to all maps in the comprehensive plan map series, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Perfect, Patty. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. We have a staff presentation tonight with Assistant Planning and Zoning Director Joanne Scoria.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Joanne Scoria, and it is my pleasure to present the Evaluation and Appraisal Review Ordinance this evening for your consideration. For background, Florida statutes require the city to evaluate and appraise its comprehensive development plan every seven years and amend it accordingly for updates through the state legislature as well as our local conditions. These amendments include the following elements of the Comprehensive Plan and the updated map series. So all of the elements listed on your screen have been affected by local conditions and require updates. The only elements that were not updated through this round of review were the coastal management element and the property rights element. I'm going to give an overview of some of the policies that were updated. One example of a policy change that occurred during this year review was updating our mixed use land use policy in various areas, for example, updating all of the height provisions to be referenced in feet rather than stories or floors, which is consistent with the city's land development regulations. We've also removed references to developments of regional impact, which are no longer applicable to the city, as the city is considered a dense urban land area. We've also added reference to Palm Beach County Water Utility Department, as some of our recent annexation areas require coordination with Palm Beach County for DRC review, and several policies for internal consistency. Moving on to the transportation element, we have struck a policy with regard to ghost trips. We've updated evaluation timeframes for LOS and QOS standards in accordance with our TOD and mobility policies. We've updated a Vision Zero Initiative policy to be an ongoing effort, and we've also made several changes throughout the element for coordination with Brightline as a rail transit provider. We've also made several other changes in accordance with our TOD policies that have been adopted over the past seven years. The housing element was also updated for consistency with the city's workforce and affordable housing program, which provided density bonuses and other incentives to encourage the development of workforce housing. We've also clarified some density calculations when it comes to skilled care nursing facilities, and we've removed a policy consistent with our workforce housing plan that encouraged inclusionary zoning regulations. This is inconsistent with the city's workforce housing program. The remainder of the elements have changes that are consistent with the changes that I've described for the future land use element, so with regard to annexation, urban and rural levels of service, and Palm Beach County Water Utility Department. So I'm going to skip over some of these slides that we've gone over and go ahead to the maps that have been updated. Every single map in our Comprehensive Plan map series has been updated to reflect the city's updated boundary. This slide shows the city's currently adopted comprehensive future land use plan, which includes several additional conditional notes in the bottom, and this map has been updated to incorporate all of those notes in a consolidated and much more easy to read table that is numbered according to the map. The map A15, the functional classification map, has been updated to include some of the new streets that we see in our city now, such as Avenue Drive and some of the roads throughout Alton, such as Alton Road and Pastore. And finally, the TOD district is incorporated in the city's Comprehensive Plan map series right now, so that provides a highlight of some of the bigger changes that occurred in the map series. The year project was not just the Planning and Zoning Department, it was actually a group effort with representatives from all of the departments that you see listed on the screen here, so we want to say a big thank you to the project team. As far as schedule, I would also like to point out that the year is due to the Department of Economic Opportunity prior to October 27, so we plan to transmit that prior to the due date, and we anticipate second reading to occur in January. The subject amendments were sent to the I Park Review Committee on August 3, and no comments have been received, and the subject petition was noticed in the newspaper on September 9. On August 8, the PIZAB recommended approval with a vote of 7 to 0, and staff recommends approval of Ordinance 16.
Thank you, Joanne. Excellent. I don't have anyone here wishing to speak, nor do I have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I please have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 16, 2023, at first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 16, 2023, first reading.
I'll second.
All right, Dana and Marcy, let's bring it back for discussion. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Marcy?
I just know that this is a huge task that you and your team took on during this year-based amendment, and you've just strengthened our comprehensive plan, and I really thank you for your efforts, because I know that this is extremely thorough, and I know it was daunting, but well, well done.
Okay, anyone else?
Nice work.
As always, yeah, so housekeeping, but you made it interesting, and the maps look fabulous. Really, really impressive maps. Thank you so much. Makes it clear, and it was Ross, yeah. You could tell he's like, it's like his kids, he's glowing. I know. We're proud too. They're beautiful. Thank you so much. And information like that being out helps our residents truly understand what's going on in their backyard, so this is important, really important. Okay, so no further discussion, it sounds like. Let's bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Moving right along to Ordinance 17, at second reading. If the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 17, 2023, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 38 Fire Protection, Prevention, and Protection by repealing and readopting Section 38-89 sprinklers as revised in order to require automatic sprinkler systems in certain residential structures. Further amending Chapter 38 by adopting new Section 38-92 to be entitled reporting requirements to establish certain reporting requirements for various fire protection systems and equipment, providing the remainder of Chapter 38 shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
All right. Thank you, Patty. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Vice Mayor and Council, and Mr. Ferris and Mr. Lohman. I'm Neil Rosenberg, your Fire Marshal and Assistant Chief, and we have one change in the ordinance, I think that Mr. Lohman had made, and that was line 10, that the ordinance applies to new construction only, and that's the only change that's been made since last one's reading.
So just the clarification that this is for new construction only is what you said. All right, excellent. All right, I'm asking my council, would we like their presentation for a second time tonight?
No, we should be good.
All right, anyone else? No? Okay, so I don't see anyone wishing to speak currently. We don't have any comment cards, so let's close this hearing and bring it back to discussion. So I'm going to close the hearing. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 17, 2023, on second reading.
Thank you, Carl.
Second.
Seconded by Dana. All right, let's bring it back for discussion. Marcy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, just thank you for answering all my questions and clarifying at Agenda Review. I really appreciate that. And just as a recap with the change, that means even if there's a renovation that occurs with more than 50% of the square footage for renovation, this does not apply.
Correct.
And a tear down and a rebuild, it does not apply. It's only for new subdivisions, new, brand new developments.
No, a tear down and a rebuild, it does apply.
So if it is, if there is a tear down and a rebuild, it does apply.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
All right, Fire Marshal, thank you so much. Your presentation was really, really thorough, and this is something that provides so much safety for our firefighters as well as our residents, and is actually beneficial financially for the homeowner, because it does go ahead and pay for itself with their insurance in the end, so you've done a really good job helping us understand this. We really appreciate your time. All right, so let's go ahead and bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, thank you, sir, very much for your time. Motion passes 5-0. All right, moving right along, we have Resolution 49, which is the site plan. Patty, if you'd be kind enough to read the title.
Resolution 49, 2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for 104-lot, single-family home residential subdivision of approximately 50.53 acres, known as Pod 18, within the residential district parcel A of the Avenue Plan Community Development, PCD. The subject site being generally located on the west side of Panther National Boulevard, approximately 0.35 miles north of North Lake Boulevard, and the Avenue PCD being generally located on the north side of North Lake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
All right, Patty, thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. We're going to also start by declaring any ex parte. I'm going to start with Carl and work my way down. If you guys have ex parte, please do so now, or negative? Dana?
None.
Marcy?
None.
All right, I don't have any myself either, so hello, we have Ken Tuma from Urban Design Studios. Good to see you.
Nice to see you. Good evening, Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studios. He's going to turn this up a little bit. Here today on behalf of Avenue, as the clerk indicated, what is in front of you this evening is approximately, approximately a 50-acre parcel of land with 104 homes. It is consistent with what you've seen in other developments within Avenue. The lot sizes, I'll show you in a second, are consistent, they're 130 and 140 feet deep. This parcel is parcel 18. It is under contract to a builder, so sometime in the near future, you will see architectural renderings for the vertical component of this site. So the subject site, as you're familiar with, is Avenue PCD. The site is located in the southwest corner of the site, over here where my mouse is. It's Pod 18. It's adjacent to one of the larger conservation areas on the site. It actually has some very beautiful views looking to the north and west on that site. Here it is in more detail on the conceptual site plan. This isn't the final entire site plan. This is the conceptual site plan. Some may change as we go through time. Here's the subject site, and the request that's in front of you is for a site plan approval. There are 72 80-foot wide lots that are 140 feet deep, 32 80 by 130s, for a total of 104 homes. We meet the requirements of open space. There are 43 on-street parking spaces spread out throughout the entire area or through the entire community. The access points, circulation and access, there is one main, one main entrance point here, that's a full access with a left turn and a right turn coming off of the main road, off of Panther National Boulevard, and then there's a secondary, or a secondary egress point, that's an egress point only, and an emergency ingress point for fire, rescue, and other items. The site, as on the screen, shows a blow up of the entry feature, the blow up of the entry. The entry has two lanes for residents and guests, and then it has, and it'll be very nice and decorative. forthcoming in the next set of approvals, when the builder comes in, you'll see a revision to this to show a grand entrance that they're proposing. There are community amenities spread throughout the site, including the mail kiosk identified in the red oval. Here are the play equipment and the swings associated with each park. As you know, in Avenue, a park is required, a .785-acre park is required adjacent to every home in a certain distance. And then adjacent to the property, there is a very nice conservation areas, I indicated earlier. There's a grade change, you'll notice a retaining wall, there's a fire break, the city requires a 10-foot fire break, and then there's also a 25-foot conservation buffer in that cross section. And then the adjacent boundaries around the property, consistent with the rest of Avenue, going to the south though, that red arrow indicates an access point to what will be a future agricultural community garden area, so that red arrow indicates a gate connection between those two. And then, of course, a long Avenue Drive is that consistent design that you did in 2016, which shows a 40-foot buffer and then a 15-foot additional buffer with a wall adjacent on that piece, on that buffer. The landscaping, we've exceeded the criteria of the landscaping allowed within the site. As you can see, the points are well above the code requirement, and the mix of trees is on the screen in front of you. The request for, the actual request again this evening is for site plan approval. We've met all the criteria, and I hope that satisfies your desire for a fast and quick presentation tonight, and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I don't know if Carl was timing you, but that was probably one of the records.
It could be a record.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Tuma. And I think we have a staff presentation, Christopher, or Natalie, do we have a presentation from staff as well tonight?
Staff is happy to make a presentation if the council wishes, but at this point, we have no additional information that would be new. I think the applicant covered it. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 49, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I don't see anyone wishing to speak, and I do not have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I please have a motion and a second to approve and bring it back for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 49, 2023, first reading.
Second.
All right, Dana and Bert, thank you guys so much. Let's chat. Anyone have a conversation about this? Marcy?
No, I think it's a great project. Thank you very much.
All right, great. You know, as always, make sure everyone has a chance to speak. No one else, Carl?
No, no. I just want to thank Ken for the nice presentation, and Carl stayed awake the whole time, so we're good. Congratulations.
Carl, wait, Carl did what? 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 What did Carl do?
No, no, let's move on. No, no, point of order. Let's just move along. Let's just, so the only, the only question I ever have is, I'm always concerned, as we know, the residents care so much about traffic happening on North Lake Boulevard. If you could just take one moment to, just as we've discussed many times before, but I just like to always bring it up, that the county will be responsible for traffic signals based on development within Avenue, or how would that work for residents so they understand that in the future?
Sure, so this particular site plan was reviewed in accordance with the master plan, so it's really the master plan that has the whole picture that Mr. Tuma showed, that has all of the entitlements. And in the master plan development order, you have all the conditions related to traffic mitigation. So some of the major mitigation measures that were provided in the Avenue Development Order was the six-laning of North Lake Boulevard. That was a critical component to ensure that the capacity was there. So there is a threshold, and the applicant has actually made pretty significant metrics in moving forward with that. Unfortunately, there have been delayed, some delays due to the county permitting of that, but they are actively moving forward, and I do believe that contract has been let for the six-laning. That is the six-laning between 140th and just right in front of State Road 7. Additionally, you have the six-laning connection that connects from North Lake Boulevard all the way up to the Beeline. That is a major project, which, again, is in the development order. The applicant will not be able to move into the second phase. So right now, we're in the first phase, we're tracking all the trips through the building permits. They will not be able to proceed into that second phase until that connection is made, and the applicant also has made significant measures in order to obtain all the permits that are necessary with Palm Beach County, DOT, and the CSX, which is really the critical agent involved in that, and they are also actively working on that. The design is moving well forward. We're working with the applicant on the design plans on that major connection. Additionally, on that, you have all the traffic signals. I think there's six of them, or there's, there's quite a few. You know, of course, the traffic signal at Avenue and North Lake has, I think you all are, know that that warrant has been met, and the county has, you know, finally issued that permit, and it is anticipated to go up toward the end of this year, or excuse me, fall, fall, yeah, fall, toward the end of the year, and then we're actively tracking all of the other signals that are anticipated. I don't know if I've missed anything, Ken.
No, that was extraordinary, Natalie. Wow, thank you. That was so thorough, and honestly, on behalf of the council, I'd love to say thank you so much to the applicant for making sure our residents are safe on the roads, and we're really delighted to hear that the county's coming through with permitting. This is so, so important, so thank you. Any other questions? All righty, and thank you for just having that available on top of your head. That was wonderful. So let's go ahead and take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Thank you again, Mr. Tuma. All right. Now we have a, let's see. If it's okay, next would be council action discussion. Would it be okay with council if we go ahead with the presentation on annexation first? Is that okay, Max?
Yes, ma'am.
If I bump it up?
Yes.
All right, let's move it up. Lori, I'm glad you're ready. I didn't give you a warning.
Yep.
I just figured we have some folks in the audience who may want to go home.
Thanks, John. Well, last but not least, good evening, Mayor Reed and Vice Mayor Woods, and members of the council. It is my pleasure tonight to present a very important initiative to you, along with Martin Fitz, and my pleasure to present to you for the first time ever as a member of your staff. So we're going to talk about eastern annexation. This is a topic the council's quite familiar with. And as a little bit of background, the goals of annexation, why do we annex? It ensures sound urban development and accommodation of growth. It allows us to, it's a tool for long-range planning of strategic growth for our city. It ensures the efficient provision of delivery of public services, we call urban services. And it provides clarity of municipal boundaries, which, as we all know, we've got a few crazy boundaries. So annexation is governed by Chapter 171 in our Florida statutes, and it does allow residents the opportunity, which will be the case in this annexation, to vote on this. So all of the registered voters in the areas that we're going to talk about tonight will have a choice, and they will get the opportunity to vote and decide if they would like to join our city. The Chapter 171 also provides criteria and procedures on how we have to go through annexation, and we'll talk to you about that this evening. There's a little bit of refresher. In 2017, the staff conducted an annexation areas of interest study, and that was accepted by the council by resolution. And this provided some baseline data on what potential areas, both eastern and western sides of our community, would be potential annexation areas. Additionally, PFM, which is a consulting firm, conducted a, I would call, a strategic document that was accepted by the council in 2022, which outlined as one of a strong growth strategy and tool, again, for future growth in the city is annexation through that process. Key strategies include consolidating municipal boundaries and facilitating, again, the delivery of municipal services. We will show here in a moment some recent annexations and furtherance of that priority, which is a key priority for our council, that we have, I'd say aggressively, but pretty procedurally been successful in several annexations here over the past few years. I'm going to ask, turn this over to our subject matter expert, Martin Fitz, for a moment to talk about a little bit more detail about the specific areas, and then I'll be back.
Well, it just would not be a presentation on annexation without me being here. So, just a little bit of refresher. This is a referendum annexation procedure that we're going to be pursuing. And any annexation has to be, the area that is being considered for annexation has to be contiguous to the current municipal boundary. It has to be reasonably compact, and it has to be developed for urban purposes. And in order to ensure that, we have, the state statute requires that we provide an individual feasibility study of the annexation area. We used to refer to it as the urban services report. And as part of, to further that, we have to send that feasibility study to the county prior to formally initiating annexation procedures. Also, we provide notice to all of the residents and owners in the proposed annexation areas, letting them know about all the dates and the procedures that are coming up. We will be doing a separate referendum for each of the areas, because not all of them are contiguous to each other. And each referendum will apply only to the area that is voting, so their votes won't be going to somewhere else to make it work. In order for each referendum to pass, we simply need 50% plus one of the people who actually vote. So, as Lori mentioned, we've recently had quite a few annexations, both on the east and the west. And this demonstrates the logical expansion of the city's boundaries based on resident requests and based on the logical areas of where it makes sense for the city to grow, to provide the unified services. So the proposed annexation areas are all located in the northeast portion of the city, and we have five different areas that will be, that we're considering for the annexation. Area 1 is the largest one, and it is generally bounded on alternate A1A on the west, and Donald Ross Road on the north. And it follows along the intercoastal waterway and Prosperity Farms Road until it gets to the southern boundary of Juno Beach, and then it moves across to Little Lake Worth on the far east. Area 2, and I'll go into these in a little bit more detail. But first, a little bit of a summary of the overall annexation areas. So all told, there's 3,500 parcels within the five areas. There's a total of just under 4,000 dwelling units currently, and that equates to a potential population of around 8,300 people, a total of about 13, just over 1,300 acres. We looked at the uses that are currently within the area. These areas are predominantly residential, with single-family residential being the primary use of the area. There is a fair number of multifamily, including an apartment building and a large, a fair, about 50 or so smaller multifamily units ranging from six to 10 units. There's also several strips of commercial, primarily along US1 and along Prosperity Farms Road. So in there, there are a few limited public and industrial parcels within the mix. Area 1, as we mentioned, is primarily focused north of PGA Boulevard. It includes Cabana Colony, the Crystal Point, Frenchman's Landing, Captain's Key and Hidden Key, as well as the area south of the Juno Beach. As you can see, this area, this proposed annexation provides for a logical boundary for our municipal boundaries by following the intercoastal waterway until we get to Juno Beach, and then following the Juno Beach boundary. And then, as on the east, we follow the waterline for a natural break of that, of the municipal boundary. Area 2 is south of the recently annexed Ritz Carlton Residences, and consists of approximately 74 dwelling units and 157 people. Area 3 is the Pirate Cove Community with 63 dwelling units and 134 people. It's bounded by the Village of North Palm on the south. Area 4 is for Monet Acres and Monet Heights. This is a, this portion of the, of this area is actually a current enclave. It's completely surrounded by the city. However, you can see that one small purple site on the side, that's a small daycare, that is an existing pocket of unincorporated land. We had previously annexed the office building to the south, and then when the Village of North Palm came in and annexed the community to the east, they left out that parcel, so we're bringing them in to the city as well. And the last area is Monet Gardens, which is another existing enclave to the east of Legacy Place. It consists of 113 dwelling units and 240 people. And I'll pass it back to Lori to talk about the, what's coming up.
So part of the requirement in the statute is that we do the feasibility study, which makes very good sense, also known as our urban service report. And so what we do, we analyze, and that's underway now, we analyze the areas, what are the current conditions, the roads, drainage, et cetera. What resources may be needed to bring them, you know, up to a higher standard, perhaps. We look at parks as well. Water and sewer, in this case, is Seacoast Utility Authority, so that's an independent organization, so we don't have to worry too much about that. And then we've also looked at land use and zoning. So again, we look at, as we look at the levels of service, the key in the annexation is for us, our requirement is that we need to be able to provide the same level of services to these areas that we do our current residents. And so that's a big part of the analysis. And then we identify, what's it going to cost? What expenses will be related to us being able to pull these areas in? What resources are needed from us in terms of employees and capital and so forth? So all that gets identified in this report. And that's obviously part of what is ultimately the financial analysis. Is this feasible? Does it make sense? So benefits to our future residents. No doubt, enhanced levels of service. We know we have a top-notch public safety services in the city, as well as our emergency management. I think we do some of the best emergency management that I know of, and definitely in Palm Beach County, if not South Florida. Elimination of fees. The annexation areas are currently paying the Palm Beach County Municipal Service Tax Unit, which is MSTU, which is an additional tax millage of 3.4581, rounded up to 3.46 mils. We don't charge for solid waste pickup in the city, so these residents will benefit from that, no longer paying that fee. We don't charge a utility surcharge. Most cities do. And we provide, we charge a reduced communication service fee, a lesser fee than what the county does, so there is a savings there as well. Many of the residents in these areas, we've identified that partake in our recreation programs, and they're paying non-resident rates, obviously, so coming into the city, they're going to get reduced rates there. And you come down to City Hall, and it's, I'm not going to say a one-stop shop, but we're right here. We're right down the street. We're accessible. We're easy to get to. You walk in, and you get your business taken care of. So we think that's, I think, quite a benefit. Easy to pull a permit. We're automated. You go online, you get your permit for your AC, and you print it out, and you keep going. Additional representation. Right now, the annexation areas have a county commissioner, who, as we know, is a fantastic county commissioner and represents them well. So in addition, they'll have five elected officials in the gardens that represent the whole city, not even specific districts, but everybody. So they'll have, you know, six folks that are out there to represent their interests and matters that they need help on. And jurisdictional consistency is, you know, really providing for clear, understandable boundaries about where you live. Some people don't, you know, they may use a North Palm or a Gardens address when they're really in the unincorporated county. This helps us clean that up a little bit. So we've got some key dates coming up. October 16, the notice of proposed annexation gets sent to all the residents and owners. That is required by the law. And October 18 is our deadline to have the annexation feasibility study, which you also, we also call urban service report. That must be delivered to Palm Beach County by that date. October 26, we will conduct a public information meeting here on the campus, and we will kind of keep it casual, open, have booths set up from all of our departments, and folks to come in and learn and gather information, and we'll share what we can and provide that information meeting that evening. And perhaps, if we need one more after the new year, we would plan to do that. Then the real legislation occurs, November 2 and December 6 is when the council will consider the five ordinances and ultimately adopt them on December 6. And then that actually places the item and is the legal requirement to, for us to put this on a ballot for what will be March 19 of 2024. That is, given that date is pretty much dictated to us by our supervisor of election, so we're going with March 19. She has a busy year next year, and that's during the presidential preference primary, which hopefully a good number of people will be out voting. So that will take place on the 19th, and should we be successful on these five ballots, if, one, two, three, hopefully all five, they're independent of one another. So we plan to phase in the effective date. By law, we know less than 10 days after the affirmative vote to no longer than a year that we have to move forward with bringing these communities into the city and making it effective. So we're looking at October 1, which is a natural date with a new budget year, and we will have already identified what we need to consider in the budget, and then we'll be phasing this in over time. Our outreach, we're reaching out to over 8,000 people, so we have a lot of work to do. And tomorrow, we will be launching a webpage that's dedicated to this initiative, and we'll continue to be updated with additional information. We'll have frequently asked questions, maps, general information, some video, you know, talking about our city, and we'll continue to update that as time goes by. We'll be making a lot of presentations to homeowners associations, and we would love for you to join us on some of those where we can. But we know in Area 1, which is the largest area, as Martin said, that there's probably over 20 homeowners associations. We'll be, and we hope to get into every one of them that we can, and make some presentations and get some information out there to these folks. We already mailed one Gardens Life magazine out to everybody in the proposed areas to give them a taste of what living in the gardens is all about, and we'll be sending a Signature City version, a Signature City publication as well. Two more, one more of each, more of the two publications will then go out again before, I think, yeah, before March. So they'll have had the opportunity to have four publications sent. We're going to attend any events we can in the proposed annexation areas. If they have, you know, a fall festival or garage sales, I know some of the communities do, that we hope we get invited. We'll come out, pop up a tent, chat with folks, get information out there, and again, build relationship, one-on-one conversations, I think, are going to go far here. I think we need to really be able to really communicate with folks. Obviously, our notice that has to go out by law, we'll be sending a formal notice to every single resident and owner in the areas. And we'll be doing a variety. We're working with a consultant to help us on the campaign to, in terms of getting information out there on a regular basis, so we'll have different mailers and information going out between now and the vote. I think one of the most important things that we need to impart to these communities is our commitment. And our commitment is that we, it is, it's not our intent to go in and upend or change their community. Each community has a unique character, and we know that, and we respect that, and we value that. So I'll read specifically, "It is not the intent of the city to disrupt or change any of the proposed annexation communities. We value and respect the unique character of each neighborhood. We want to come in and make it better. We want to provide improved services where we can and enhance their quality of life." So, tonight, we seek your consensus. If you like the idea, we would love to, the consensus to move forward with this. And again, should we do so, then in November and December, we'll be bringing the five ordinances for consideration and adoption to you for first and second readings. Any questions?
Thank you, Lori. All right, so you're looking for us to give you consensus to move forward with this initiative, and we will have the opportunity to do first reading on November 2 and second reading on December 6, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Vote, is it needed? Just affirmative or a nod, or?
Yeah, I'm on board totally to do this, so that's fine. But I just want to make two recommendations, if I can, to the city manager and yourself. We're going to have the workshop on 10/26, which I think's what needs to be done, so that's awesome. Set up the departments, people walk through. My recommendation is, are we going to have any sort of setup at the Green Market in the month of November before a second vote? The first vote is 11/2, so let's say that it goes through. Before the second vote on 12/6, I think we really need to heavily address any questions or issues that people might have as they walk through the initial workshop. Educate at the Green Market, set up a tent, talk about annexation, what we're doing. And then if a second workshop is needed in council chambers, it should be before the December 6 vote, before it gets a second approval, if it does, because then at that point, there's no turning back, and I don't want a bunch of disgruntled people in here. If, you know, we're going to give them enough information, for sure, but I, you know, there's always some that are not going to realize they didn't get information, they didn't know what's going on, and then you get 100 people in here screaming and yelling, even though we've given them 100 opportunities to see what's going on and how the improvements are going to be for these particular areas. But I just want to make sure that we're doing-
Thank you.
Enough public information, that's all.
Yes, for those suggestions, and, you know-
We'll look into that and see how it fits into the schedule and where we're at, at that period of time.
My concern is just before the second vote, that's all. I mean, if there's two workshops, if it's one workshop, if it's a couple Green Market weekends, I think that's the more the better, that we can display that before that second vote, which is going to be critical to getting it on the ballot and moving forward. So that's my recommendation.
And at the end of the day, they will, if it gets to the ballot, they get to vote. And I think that's the key, that they have that choice.
Okay.
And we'll learn from that date. So yes, thank you.
Okay.
This is going to be a bit of a fluid process. As we learn and adjust, we have different messaging for different communities, and it's, we have our work cut out for us, but any suggestions, we're always welcome to hear. So I appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
All right, Marcy?
Oh, sorry.
No, I have just a few comments, and I do want to start by thanking you, because I know this has been a council objective for a long, long time, and I'm also 100% in support of this. And with all the development happening around us in every which way, this kind of helps us, you know, control our destiny as well. And you said it really, really well, and I appreciate what you said, because Carlton Oaks, Osprey Isles, and many other communities can attest that we are their voice now, that they've been able to annex into our city. We've done that with, they've asked for turn lanes, they've asked for lights, you know, on Northlake, and help with traffic, and help with the county, and we've really gone above, staff has gone above and beyond to help all of our constituents, including our new members of our city. So we will be definitely, in my opinion, providing a better quality of life because of all the things that you said with, you know, lowering taxes potentially and better services, and of course, our first responders. But, you know, it's a definite benefit. And I've already seen comments about this on Nextdoor, and there is a lot of information that you guys are preparing, and I think everyone's going to be very excited to see this. So I'm really looking forward to welcoming our new neighbors into our city.
Thank you, Marcy. Anyone else? Sorry, thank you, Marcy. Anyone else?
I'm all in. So wherever I can be at an HOA meeting, I know when I tried to get real- get reelected, or I got reelected, the HOAs was where the votes were at, because those people tell people what to vote, how to vote. They all mingle, and that information gets out. So I'm willing to be at any HOA meeting needed, scheduling permitted. It makes sense to bring these pocket communities into the family. District One's going to be a challenge, just because you got personalities from the water to Cabana Colony. It's big. So who knows what that'll be. But I think if we can get in the houses and talk, and in the communities, I think we can easily sway them with the benefits of being in the city. I'm in. Let me know where I need to be. So thank you.
All right. So it sounds like you've received consensus from council to move forward.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great presentation, Lori. Thank you. All right, we're going to go backwards now. So if we could go to items for council action and discussion, does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening? Looking, I'm looking. Marcy?
Well, I just want to say shanatva and wish all of our Jewish friends a Happy New Year. And I do appreciate all of the awards that the city has, has received, our city staff has received. And I have to say, I've taken the, left the classes from, you know, our fire department, and they have done an amazing job in learning CPR on children, on adults. And I recommend everyone take them. They're open to everybody, and they do an excellent, excellent job. And I just want to say, thank you.
And I just want to say thanks to my council team. We have gotten more invitations to things than I've ever had before in my short period on council. And I know all of us up here have other jobs to do as well, and families, and weddings, and, you know, sandwich generation. So I know we can't all be everywhere all the time. So thank you. I know sometimes we get one council member there, sometimes we get all five of us. Just want to say thank you guys for making yourselves available. It means a lot. I think it's great for the community, especially now that more people might get to know us, and we can be their voices as well. And that is it for that. So let's move on. Do we have a city attorney report, Max?
Oh, ma'am.
All right. So if there's no other business, we are adjourned.